I mean, order and if you hear yourself, I'll offer a blessing and prayer. Lord, thank you for this morning and in the just the nice weather we're having for this time of year. Lord, thank you for the blessings that we enjoy here in Lookle County. And as we think about next week and recognizing our veterans, not only here at the county, but our veterans who served this country throughout generations from from our founding through this very moment. Or we just want to recognize them for their bravery, their courage, their commitment to our nation and to our freedom and liberties we enjoy. And just lift each and every one up, the ones we know, the ones we don't know. And Lord, the ones who have made the sacrifice so that again, we we can be here today. And Lord, is there a conflicts around the world? We just ask that you put your hand upon each of them, keep them safe and return home to their families. Lord, help us as we go through our agenda this morning and we hear our updates and all the good things that are happening here in Lookle County. We love you and we thank you for your son, Jesus, in his name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Minutes have been presented for October twenty eighth and October twenty ninth. If you've had a chance to review those, I would entertain a motion to approve both dates, the twenty eighth and twenty ninth of October.
Motion to approve the minutes from the twenty eighth and the twenty ninth of October.
Second. Okay, motion second approved, minutes is presented. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Minutes approved. Next, we'll go to our monthly department head updates. First, we have James from nine one one. Good morning, James.
Good morning. So the month of October, just for the quick stats update, we logged four thousand four hundred and fifty seven calls from service. Approximately fifty five percent of those fell into our top ten categories. We had a hundred and three alarm calls. Law enforcement assist conducted two hundred and sixty three assist motorists, civilians, citizens or agencies responded to ninety nine calls for various disturbances. EMS responded to three hundred and twenty one calls. There were law enforcement, fire and EMS responded to a hundred and fifty eight motor vehicle accidents. Law enforcement conducted six hundred and forty three individual or directed patrols. Fire responded to over fifty two various category items from structured fires to natural cover fires. First responders went to five hundred and eighty three various traffic related events. We conducted over ninety one wheel checks and responded to two hundred and twenty six calls for suspicious persons, activity or items. And then the only other thing of notes, officially, we did, we got all of our storm siren equipment up and running. We were able to do an initial test with the Julie Barber School in Bennett Springs. We were able to have a successful test. And then this month, we will actually be the location for the monthly countywide test where we will set off all sirens for the city and the county. And then we will enter the normal rotation. Every other month, we'll set off the sirens, test our capabilities. And then OEM is the primary, be setting off theirs. Other than that, any questions?
Have we, have we received an invoice for that equipment yet?
Yes, we did. And we came up with a budget.
I hadn't seen it, so I just curious.
I got it last week. I sent it to Mike with the BOs, still attached to it, but we were running a budget from what they ordered.
Great. And I think we can contribute part of that to maintenance, being able to help run that case. Kudos. Any questions for James?
Don't believe it is?
All right, anything we need to help you with?
As of right now.
Pardon me?
As of right now.
No, okay.
Give me till Friday.
Give me till Friday.
No, I'm kidding.
You never know what phone calls gonna change the difference, gonna make the difference.
Still early.
All right, well, James, thank you for that. Again, you're welcome to stay. If you need to get back down there, we'll we'll understand that as well. Randy, good morning. OEM update?
Good morning. This will take about two minutes. So in our record.
I didn't even set the timer.
There you go. We we installed in between bus wrecks and other things, we were able to tweak the new Davis weather station at Conway. And it is mounted about thirty six feet off the ground, which is much higher than anything else we have in the county. And it's online. And I'm going to, as as long as we don't overload the system to where they wanna charge us for something, I'm going to allow the public to to view that. Where they can actually watch in real time the barometric pressure, which the barometer there is probably twice as nice as anything we've ever had. Very, very accurate. And so we're gonna allow the folks to view that particular unit. And that way, those that wanna storm watch can kinda can kinda do it on their own. We're not, what we're gonna do is just give them the information and see how that goes. We can change it at any time. But as of right now, we're unlimited on on how many posts or how many entries we can have. So let's see how that works. It is a better system than the others. It works very well. Everything about it is good. It does, it does call for some maintenance, which I'm not pleased about, but probably once, we'll see how it goes. Every sixty days, we have to go up and and make sure the cup is clean on the top and where it's at. Probably not gonna get any leaves, but you never know, could be debris, whatever. So and we'll know when when we have to clean it, because it'll tell me. So it does have a little maintenance on the system. It is, it's it's operated by solar. So if we have like four days, you know, where we don't have any sunlight at all, it does have a battery backup. So we may have to change the batteries on top side as well occasionally. So we've entered into an agreement with Conway Fire, you know, to help us on that. And they have big ladders, so we'll use big ladders. I don't think we need a ladder truck for that. But we'll just see how that goes. And I don't know how long till we're gonna have to do it. But it's well worth it to do it because it's 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 a great system and it's a system that we can we can count on. And also the National Weather Service can count on it as one of their stable systems. So they can monitor, you know, from National Weather Service in Springfield, our unit, which I think is pretty cool. And see when that barometric pressure is dropping or raising. And it will help on the predicting and the forecast, I think, quite a bit. And I'm anxious to, you know, try it, but I don't really wanna try it. I don't want the storms in here. But but if we're gonna have them, then I wanna know about it quicker. And this is a a good tool. Probably the best tool, I think, we purchased in thirteen years as far as we can ever really help in real time on predictions. So I'm pleased with that. It does, it does take a little extra maintenance, a little more than the other monitors and the other weather stations. Other than that, we're just basically starting to prep and plan for winter problems. Don't know when they're coming or if they never come. But, you know, we're we're getting all of our relationships in place and all of our partners in place to. And what'll happen there is if we're if we're if they're predicting ice storm, then maybe we'll have twenty four hour notice. And we will, you know, we'll we'll notify everybody and bring everybody in. And that's when we'll drop assets and see who has what, kinda like we have in the past. Only this time, we can do it a little more authentically. Because we are now set up where when we have one of those command meetings with all the command staff of the of the county and the city and the state, the feds and all the fire departments and nine one one, now we can we can direct line video straight to National Weather Service. And we can actually have a meteorologist right there in a room with us and and he can tell the facts. And so that's also a good thing. So we're preparing for those meetings now, trying to get everything set up for it. We have two video systems, so we'll have a, you know, a Plan A and a Plan B. Also, about three weeks ago, I testified in front of HUD via satellite on the Zoom call. And I expressed the need for this volunteer system that we've used for ten years. And I don't know if it's, I'm sure I had a little part in it, but yesterday, we were confirmed that we are gonna get our girls back. And we'll have them back online within ten days. We'll have one girl for sure, Laura. And and a couple at the courthouse, I think. And I don't know where they where they're placed over here. Those goodwill girls, did you have one mic for maintenance? You didn't? Okay, maybe you can get one to help on cleaning. But but they're gonna allow one with me and two at the courthouse. So somebody over here is already hooked into that. I don't know who that is. Do you know who that is?
First I've heard of it, Randy.
So, but that's a good thing during the furlough, that they were able to authorize that. You know, that's a great thing. So that tells me that, you know, some things are moving in the furlough. I predict that within a week, things will be back online with some signs that I'm seeing on a daily basis, hopefully. And that'll come just right time for us, our staffing, you know, before winter. I think that's all I have. I know that's over two minutes.
So that weather station there at Conway, so there would be a website that I could go to to log in, right? Because that's gonna report to a website. How does that work?
Sule is the expert on that. So what you do on your phone is you go to the website.
Okay.
And then you've got a code for our unit and come right back to it. And on the phone itself, you know.
So there's an app, maybe that has to be down.
Davis Weather Station app.
Okay.
Just like the old one.
Okay.
And then you can hit Conway, boom, and then it tells you a whole.
Now, will it bring up all those or just Conway?
It can do both.
Okay, so.
Yes.
So all of our weather stations then will be viewable. Is that a true statement?
That's a true statement, but I don't wanna over flood Davis, you know, and giving everybody all of them. You know, since that is the window to our storms normally, and ninety six percent of the case, that's the window. So and the public's been after this for a couple of years.
Sure.
So I'm gonna give them that main one because I think it can handle the overload if they if a storm's coming in. You know, after speaking to Davis, they don't have a problem with that. They said now if we get ten thousand, then yeah, they're gonna have a problem. But as of right now, let you see how that works.
Okay.
And next Tuesday, I'll bring David in. Well, no, sometime.
Be be next, our next meeting be next Thursday.
Okay.
Tuesday, as veterans say.
Okay, so I'll probably just have him get with Commissioner direct and if you want it on your phone, you know. I mean, there's.
You want me, you want me to put you on the agenda and he can he can come in at that time or is it a little too early to?
No, I think. We'll be okay for that. Yeah, Thursday. And the only thing it does, it eats up a little bit of your battery. You're gonna, you know, it's gonna use five percent more battery quicker in your iPhones. That's on the downside.
What if there's a timeout on the app, once you log in? I wonder if there's a timeout if you don't.
Use it.
If you don't.
There is.
Okay.
There is.
Because that could really, I think, bring the system down possibly.
Yeah, there is. I don't know what that is.
Okay. Because I know some apps don't don't close. They just stay open.
And we're gonna be helping Lev and Rural Fire for the next couple of days, move their stuff from one building to another. So.
And that stuff is?
Office equipment, the use of our flatbeds, what they're asking, you know, to help move the stuff. If you see us out around five north, that'd be what it is.
Okay.
And. I think that's probably all I have right now.
The only thing I would mention, and maybe you could do some additional outreach. There is a window of opportunity for rural fire departments that have an annual budget of fifty thousand dollars a year or less to possibly secure a fifteen thousand dollar grant. I've reached out to Stoutland Sleeper, have not heard back. I did reach out to Eldridge and they were gonna investigate it. But if you wanna push that word out, I don't know that we'd have any others that would have an operating budget less than fifty thousand. But it looks like it's the proverbial low hanging fruit. I would say much like what the Governor's Blue Shield Program was. They've allocated about like one point four million or one point five million. And they intend, they they believe there's about three hundred rural fire departments in Missouri. And it looks to me like it's kinda like the first come, first served type, much like, I think, the Blue Shield Program. And so if you run into any of the volunteers or you have their personal cell phone numbers and James, you as well, you might reach out to them. Those were the only two I could think of. I think the other fire departments, probably operating budgets are greater than fifty thousand. I'm sure Bennett Spring is. Is that a true statement?
Nevo Falcon is.
Nevo Falcon?
Competition's borderline. It's it's close to that.
Okay. And I don't know, Eric, did you know any of the board members?
Conway.
Conway's more than that.
So if you can just help spread that word, and I think time is is critical.
Those two that you called have called me and asked me to write that form.
Well, and I offered to and offered to help. We have a person in this room that has written grants at the federal level before. And I did offer to help with Eldridge if they desired any. And again, I hadn't heard back from the others, but and then I would even propose that if the commission would consider it, if we have anything left in our CDT funding, it's it's a five percent match. And there might be a way that we could help cover that, maybe a little less than eight hundred dollars per successful grantee, I guess.
I'll reach out to them. Are there guidelines on what that can be used for?
You know, the, what I read was, you know. They did mention radios. I don't know if I'm gonna mention that to you or not, but they did mention radios. But but a lot of the radios they'd like to have are probably more expensive than that, right? So I don't know what their best use for it would be, but it, you know, it talked about different types of equipment apparel that they would need when they.
I think they're talking about brush equipment.
Yeah, so, yeah.
And would I qualify for that, have a less than fifty thousand dollar budget? That was a gift.
Well, you you could if you're not careful.
I give him an opportunity to keep his hands.
That's just pen chest.
I know. I'll reach out today.
Yeah.
Help him.
And we would be willing to help here from from writing and grant.
I think that's a big, I think that's big, that's our biggest. These guys are, they're not paperwork wizards and they don't like paperwork. They like running grunts on operations. So I'll do that. Can I say one more thing that's a positive? Mike, it's pertaining to you. I have had four, at least four, and maybe more, but at least four persons that use this parking lot out here for different and various reasons, come to our office and say, "Oh, I just wanna say that that courtyard and courthouse property looks wonderful." And the flowers and the bushes and, you know, and I had to, I didn't even know what they were talking about the first time. But I just wanna give you a pat on the back that people are seeing that, John Q. citizens, and they're loving it. So, thank you, Mike.
That's their gardeners, their help.
Whoever gets the credit, but you had to authorize it, so, yeah. So anyway, people are seeing it.
It's coming along.
Okay.
Okay, do we have any questions for Randy?
Don't believe so, not just time.
Okay. Hearing done, then Randy, thank you for the update. And again, you're welcome to stay, but we understand if you have to.
I'll stay a little bit.
Okay. So good morning, Mike. Now we'll have our maintenance update.
Well, the last few weeks have been a lot of jail activity. Any words from the plumbing being plugged up? Most of it inmate initiated. But we've been able to get all that except for one incident where we had to call in somebody. We're gonna get the quote for the cell locks. There's three distributors for this one particular lock, and you have to buy them through a distributor. I tried to reach out to the closest one, which is Jeff City. And hopefully, if we hear back from him, and if not, then I'll reach out to St. Louis and Kansas City. See about having somebody come down. Hold on, hold on a second. We've been, of course, working with the jail on the updating the control system. We now have the intercoms working again with the new speakers. And so they can talk to the cells directly and they can hear a lot better. So they have a lot more communications that was lacking for a while there.
Can I ask questions as we go? So when you say new speakers, did we replace speakers?
We we took the old little computer speakers that they had there.
Okay.
And we we've actually got speakers that will go on their screens. So it's right there. And the microphones that we were using, we had to replace the last of the old ones that finally died. We got a couple of new ones of those. So they sit right in the control room. And we had to rewire those to work. And at the moment, we have two, one for upstairs, one for downstairs. When our new updated system comes for the jail control room, that will return back to one. So we'll just have that one speaker in here. But that is the intercom speaker that works for where they can, they see inmates doing something, they say, hey, what are you guys doing? And let them know they're being watched. It also works for when they are hitting the button to request something or whatever they do. Yeah, the old, the old ones just finally, you know. They were hard to hear, hard to understand what anybody was saying, saying like when they were speaking out, it was tracking. Yeah, there's been a lot of G S stuff lately, so. So we're working through all that, you know. And of course, like we literally worked with Master Gardeners to get a little bit of this landscaping done, a little bit of planning done. Really a small, looking amount that that we've done. They planted a little, we planted a little just to kind of brighten up the place a little bit in the Dull area, you know, which I think looks great. I don't know if you guys have seen it, but you know, if you haven't, take a look underneath the tree as you drive by. Of course, this time of year, we shut down the cooling tower, got it shut down, drying out so I can get it cleaned, ready for next year. On RTU five, we're at the mercy of Aon right now. For them to come up with new control board, they have communicated back that they are looking at it. So we just haven't got the answer back yet for what they're hoping.
And and Mike, the impact on the on the location, it's it's this wing here from Linda's office to down here and then.
Upstairs.
And upstairs. Does that juvenile as well?
Yes.
So it's it's directly above us?
Yes.
In here, across the hallway, it doesn't impact them? Okay.
That unit controls this on the second floor and then the third floor up there. Now, heat wise, we're still able to produce some heat in there with the ground source system. We're still heating up that water. We can easily put a little heat in there, so it ain't like it's gonna be freezing in here. It was just the AC part of it that was.
So the air handlers still work?
Yes. Yes, we're still moving some air and we're still rotating the air. We we were able to get the fans moving. One, so the air wasn't getting stagnant. And also, we were able to manually control if we wanted a little outside air or just inside air. So we were able to use some of that cool outside air to cool it down a little bit in here. And the other good thing, you have that little bit of noise in the background, so you know it doesn't sound so quiet. Yeah, we got that up and up and running, that part, we just bypassed the system to do it, so. And any more questions on that one? Yeah, that's been a slow process. I've had Lou working on that proposals for the digital messaging that Randy's been working on. So we hopefully will have him something by the end of the week or before to see how low cost we can do that. Just over maintenance, it just keeps on going.
Do we have any questions for Mike?
Nope, believe so.
All right. Mike, you're welcome to stay, but if you need to go, we understand that as well, so. Okay. And with that, I'll welcome our new, not our new guests, our familiar guests here this morning. I'm sure they have great news. I can't wait to hear it. But I need to take about a two minute recess. And then when we come back in, we'll we'll turn the floor over to you. Okay, James? But I need to take about a two minute recess, and then when we come back in, we'll, we'll turn the floor over to you, okay, James?
Okay.